Good evening. So we're going to start this evening with a workshop on noncitizen resident voting and a possible resolution that's on this evening's agenda later. So I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent to get us started.
Good evening. Today, we will begin with a workshop on the proposed resolution to advocate to the Portland City Council to advance Councilor Ali's proposal to permit noncitizen residents to vote in municipal elections. Councilor Ali and Mayor Strimling approached Chair Travaro shortly before this issue was placed before the council on July 18th. And since then, both Chair Travaro and I have discussed multiple ways to approach this issue and landed on what is before you today. Today, you have before you a draft resolution that I prepared based on the San Francisco Unified School District's adopted resolution for the same purpose from a couple of years ago. Our purpose today is for you to discuss this matter -- I'm sorry, to discuss the matter before you and make a decision on whether you want to proceed with the resolution today or postpone consideration of the resolution until the next board meeting or to decide it is not in the board's purview to consider this altogether. In your packets which you received on July 28th, you have a copy of the draft resolution, backup materials from the city council's packet, and some related readings on the topic. We sent the packet out and publicized today's workshop and hearing in order to ensure that the board actively engages the public around its consideration of this issue. This is particularly important because today could be the only time that the board considers this prior to council action or altogether for that matter. Over the past couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to speak to most of you about your thoughts on this topic, and I know that there's a diversity of opinions on this matter ranging from strong support to misgivings about the process and the overall timing and preparation for taking up this issue. Again, as I said at the beginning, the outcome of today is not preordained. You may decide to take up the resolution or not. You may vote it up or down if you decide to consider it altogether. Regardless, I believe that this will be a valuable experience for the board to consider a timely and important topic and that education in Portland will be better served for your discussions. Chair Travaro will be facilitating the meeting from this point on, so I will turn it over to her.
Okay. So Javier just gave you the kind of background of this. I'm just going to turn it over to discussion so that people can kind of get their thoughts out there on the table, and I'll weigh in kind of as needed. Nobody wants to start? Mr. Atkinson.
Hello? Okay. Sorry, there's a lot of crickets going on here, so I guess I'll kick us off. I'm strongly in support of this resolution and strongly in support of extending voting rights to noncitizens. And so I'm hopeful that we can support this strongly despite whatever misgivings we may have around the process or where this is coming from politically. I feel strongly enough that this is an issue of rights and that trumps any question of that it's summertime and people aren't paying attention or whatever other arguments seem to be coming out against this. So that's where I'm at. I also have a small amendment that I plan on offering if it seems right. And I've been in contact with everybody who's at the meeting on the board about the contents of that and the meaning behind it. So we can get into that more, I guess, as we discuss further.
And I'll just note very briefly, Ms. Moriarty did text me. She is on her way. She's running a little bit late. Ms. Bendel won't be making it this evening. She has a work obligation. And Ms. Seliger is sick this evening and won't be making it. Any other comments right now? Ms. Yuri.
Hi. I'm just jumping into this now, but I am so incredibly excited about this resolution, whether it's a matter of not as much the board jurisdiction, whether this applies to us and this is our responsibility. I think absolutely. Going to schools and the Portland Public Schools means that my community, in my community, immigrants are included in that. And that means they should be included in our city and should be included in our voting rights. And for me, that's a no-brainer because these are my peers, and their parents are part of the city, and this is part of our educational community. So I think this absolutely applies to us. And again, in the current times right now, and it's been contentious. And this is our step forward and showing this is what we're about, this is who we are. And I think that's amazing. So yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair. So I was just thinking if maybe as we start having the discussion, if we can consider -- as I've heard people speak of whether they support this or not, I see this as two separate discussions. One, the issue itself of extending the voting to noncitizen residents, and then there is the resolution that the board is going to vote on. So as we maybe go around and keep talking, maybe people can -- because I think we do feel differently about the resolution and the board's role than we do about the issue at times. So maybe someone feels like they want to chime in that way, and then I really do want to hear others' perspectives before I chime in with mine.
Mr. Balfont.
So I agree with Roberto on splitting up this issue. First, I do not believe that it's within the school board's purview to tell the city council how to act in this manner as far as extending voting rights to the city council. So that's where I stand on that. I think we can split it up a little further too and say, all right, if it is within our purview, then I don't believe -- I think that there are issues and questions that still exist that make us -- where we should not take up this issue, where we should not take up this resolution. And I'll go through some right now. The biggest one is that the legality of this, not resolution, but the underlying issue about extending rights to noncitizens. In the packet, you will see legal memos from the corporate counsel of the time. And to just give you context of what happened, there were a series of memos. And basically, what the corporate counsel was doing, he was doing a good job for his client, Portland. Portland wanted to send this out to the voters, and he was able to do that. He was able to find a path to get it out to the voters. But that path was fraught with legal dangers. It started off with one memo in which he said that extending the right to vote to noncitizens was questionable at best. Then at some point, he made a comment saying that it was a coin toss. Apparently, people on the charter commission latched onto it, thinking that was an equal chance that it would withstand a legal challenge, that he had to write a memo explaining that, no, it's not even 50-50 a chance. He had to say in a memo that it was a 60-40 against the right to vote surviving a legal challenge. Then we have what apparently this, what the city council's packet is relying on is this memo or this opinion from August 18th, 2010. And we have to be clear that there are two things that are dated August 18th, 2010 in our memo. One is an opinion that is specifically for the charter commission to wrap up its business. They needed to have a legal opinion from an attorney saying that it was legal to do. And he was able to do that, but again, the path to that was just fraught with legal danger. And you cannot rely on that opinion alone. You have to read the memo in conjunction with it. And in that memo, the corporation counsel writes -- now, let's see here. Pages two and three of his memo, that'll be pages 21 to 22 of the workshop packet. "The Immigrant Voting Project, an effort organized to support voting by immigrants, concludes that main state law would have to be changed to allow noncitizens to vote on municipal issues. At this point, my recommendation to the commission," this is the charter commission, "because of the legal uncertainty surrounding this issue is that the commission should take up the issue on its merits and decide if a majority of the commission wished to submit it to the voters. If a majority of the commission decides to submit the question and the necessary charter language to the voters for approval, it should be submitted as a standalone question so that, if approved by the voters, a legal decision from a court in the form of a declaratory judgment can be obtained to resolve the issue clearly and finally, as it is not one that can be resolved by an opinion of legal counsel. In such circumstances, it would be imperative to seek and obtain a legal decision on the issue before any election was held at which noncitizens were allowed to vote." And in the, in that last part of his memo, let's see here, he concludes. Now typically, the language that's required for the charter commission says that, "I will certify that such a provision extending the right to vote to noncitizens is not prohibited by state law." But he added in this memo at the end that, "I will certify that such a provision is not prohibited by state law and go to court to get a definitive answer if the provision is submitted to and approved by the voters." So the attorney, he was doing good by his client by getting to yes, but it was not that it would withstand legal challenge. So when, if, let's just say, okay, that the city council decides to do this and they approve it to extend noncitizens the right to vote, it doesn't stop there. According to this memo, main state law would have to change. And then the city would have to go directly to the court for a judgment to ensure that it is legal. There's a bunch of uncertainty here. That's just, that's just one, you know? The legality of this. And for us to take it up right now before any of that has been discussed, it's not within our purview. Additionally, in our packet, we're relying on a memo from 2010. Has the corporation counsel, the current corporation counsel, adopted that? There's nothing in the record to say that. I'm assuming it's implied, yes, but perhaps they should write something to that effect? Perhaps they should ensure that the law is still good? So with that alone, I would say that we do not take up this resolution until, maybe never, but until at least those questions are addressed and the way forward is figured out.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. And I'm not going to repeat everything that my colleague, Mr. Balfont, said, but I want to agree with him in the fact that I don't feel that this is an educational issue. I don't think it's the school board's purview to be weighing in whether or not we want people to vote or not to vote. I think that that is a decision to be made by the council to put out to our city and our community and let our community decide what they would like. Overwhelmingly, there's been a lot of movement lately, and I think the community has certainly some feelings one way or the other or both ways. But again, the last time that this came up, it was defeated by a very small margin. And for that reason, when we started talking about at first, this was going to be on the board agenda as a vote without a workshop and without a public hearing. And for me, those were two important components to have those added to our process. But then with everything being all in one night, a workshop, a public hearing, and a vote, to me, feels very rushed. I don't feel our vote on the resolution prior to council has the weight or the message that some think it will. I think that, again, that it's within their purview to be discussing this and having legalities discussed and having memos and so on and so forth and putting out message. I think it's the summertime. I know it's the summertime, so I don't think it's summertime. And this isn't on people's radar right now. It is on some, but our community, I think we learned recently with the discussion around the shelter going into D3, that a lot of my neighbors in that community had no idea about the shelter, and they wanted to have a discussion around the item. And I feel that people may want to weigh in, whether positive or, you know, constructive one way or the other, but I don't think we've given them the opportunity, the full community, to be able to share with us. We've gotten some emails both ways with regards to support and not supporting. But again, I come back around to the fact of it's not a school board's purview, it's not an educational matter. I really want it to go to the voters and have it decided upon at the box, but it's not whether I feel, again personally, whether there should be the right to vote or not. What I'm focusing on is the resolution period. So that's where I stand at this time, that I really think that this isn't the appropriate place for this. Thank you.
Other comments? Well, I'll weigh in. Oh, Ms. Davis.
As one of the charter commissioners who considered this issue in great depth over many months on camera eight years ago before our community, we started work on this, and I believe it was February, we were discussing it before we actually started work on it because we, when we first started to meet, we developed a list of issues that we would be discussing, and this was one of them. And we worked on camera for three hours a week, almost every single week. We did not meet in committee, we did not meet off-camera. We talked in public to our community, and our community talked to us. This was an issue which had a great deal of discussion. But that was eight years ago. And this issue has not had the same kind of discussion now. I share Ms. Thompson's concern that the process in this case has not been what it should be. It is neither transparent, inclusive, or accountable. It doesn't follow our usual procedure. And this is a board which has always prided itself and strived to have process which is transparent, inclusive, and accountable. What we're doing, considering something at this point that has just come up as a community issue within the last few weeks, for us now to be discussing and potentially voting, to me, seems a suspension of our normal process and one with which I am not comfortable. My record is clear and public as a charter commissioner, and that's all I need to say about the issue. I'm on record. Part of our packet was signed by me and in part written by me. Ms. Travaro and I were both charter commissioners. But I am not sitting here tonight as a charter commissioner. I'm sitting here as a school board member charged with determining and working to set educational policy. That's very different than the charge I had as a charter commissioner, where I was charged with examining issues such as this: who should vote? Should we have an elected mayor? Should we use ranked choice voting? Those were charter commission issues. And they can also, because the charter can be addressed by the city council, they are city council issues. But in no way are they school board issues. And so for that reason alone, this resolution to me seems inappropriate for this body to consider. Whatever my personal opinion on the issue is, I can and have expressed to my city counselors and to other city counselors. That's for me to do as an individual, not for me to speak as a school board member because this is not a school board issue. School board issues, and ones of which I have deep concern, are how we're going to address our budget coming in the upcoming year. We haven't even debriefed our past budget experience. We need to get to work on next year's budget, as it will undoubtedly be challenging. We need to get to work on our facilities because we have capacity which is not well-matched with our student population at the moment. Hall school will open with empty seats. It was built for 558 students. I believe we're putting 411 in it unless the attendance has gone up since then. We need to address those issues. And then, of course, we need to address the issues that surround how do we meet the educational needs of all our students. So for me, this is not appropriately before the board, and I will not be voting in support of it.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair. So I guess for me, you know, if I speak about the issue itself, I'm always going to look as extending the opportunity to participate in voting as a positive. That's always, that's something that's going to strengthen a community because it's going to allow more people to participate in our democracy. I view some of the biggest challenges that we have as a working body in a city like this is to reach our community, to effectively communicate with them, and to listen to what they have to say. And for me, extending the opportunity to vote is a simple way to get closer to achieving that goal. You know, you're opening a gate, a gateway for somebody to participate. And so as it is, it's going to help us achieve our greater goals in the district because we'll be effectively engaging with people that we haven't been able to at this level. I'm going to, I really am torn about the role of the school board and the resolution itself, but I feel strong enough about the issue to support it because I feel like it would have, again, it would have a positive effect in the greater work that we're doing. And I want to just make an example or give an example of where I draw my opinion from. I think a lot about where I'm from, from Puerto Rico, right? So Puerto Ricans are, we are, we have birthright citizenship, right? We are born American citizens, but we don't have extended voting at the federal level. We only get to vote at the local level, municipally, and for governor of the island. And but yet, you know, we pay Medicare taxes, we pay income taxes, federal taxes, and we actually, if you look at like bottom line, Puerto Rico contributes more to the economy of the United States than we receive in federal aid. So it's actually a really upside-down transaction. And then we saw what happened 11 months ago when literally disaster strikes, when we have a catastrophe, and the response of the federal government is a press conference where President Trump is throwing paper towels at folks and making a joke of it. And I feel like if the Puerto Rican people had a little bit more political capital at the federal level, we wouldn't be having a, you know, a press conference where we're having paper towels being thrown at folks who are literally dying. So when I hear arguments about the process that this is taking, the challenges that, you know, this might present in a courtroom in the future, which I suspect that the 15 Amendment, you know, wasn't a breeze to get ratified in the Constitution, but that was, you know, worth the fight. So when I look at those things, I don't see them as a strong enough barrier for me to support the issue. I, again, I see extending the opportunity to participate in voting as an absolute positive win. And so I feel really strong about supporting this resolution if and when we get to vote on it. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Moriarty.
Thank you to the community members that are here tonight. I really am excited to see your faces here and be a part of this discussion with us. I'm, as our representative Rodriguez said, I've been torn on this one because looking over our, when you see on policy the responsibilities of the school board, this is really not one of them. What we are charged to do is take care of your children and the children of our community and to ensure that they are safe in their schools and they have a good education and to work with the families, of course. But a decision this magnitude is not in our purview. It's just not. However, being an elected official, this is my 10th year on the board, there have been times when we put forward a resolution to say what we're in support of, which including a safe haven for our immigrant students and their families. We've said that. We put forward resolutions saying that what we can support and stand behind. Whether that's our purview or not necessarily, I think sometimes we do stretch that, those responsibilities there a bit. However, when it, when this is showing that we would be indicating we would like the council to bring something to our Portland voters and for them to make a decision, whether it be, whatever the decision may need to be, but to just basically say, we are in support of you bringing this issue to the Portland voters, that's where I'm full support of. We should always be saying, and I would always invoke, get this to the Portland voters. Because I personally, if I had to go to the polls today and vote on this issue, I would be a resounding yes. We need the civic engagement of all of our community members, whether they are immigrant status or refugee status, asylum status, or US citizens. In my opinion, the broader access we have and availability of civic engagement in our decision-making, the better off we are. It just, and particularly when going to the polls is a way for you to indicate what you want for your own children and our own schools. So personally, I would support this wholeheartedly. Collectively, I'm torn. However, if, again, this indicates to the council, yes, we want to get this to the Portland voters, I want to move that there. I'm not, I don't love the language that we put forward. I just, it's just, I'm just, again, torn. But I will follow the majority of our board, however we fall out on this. But I agree with many of my colleagues around the process around this. When we have a month off, we always get stuck in sometimes these binds, but this is a resolution of just indication of what we support and what we don't support and/or maybe we don't want to have any indication at all. And that would mean not voting on it at all. So tonight, I'm more in alignment to support this, to move this forward, and to share with our city council how we feel that our community should be a part of the collective decision-making for our students and schools. So that's about as far as I could get. So I would be voting in favor of it tonight, but I will completely understand and do understand where my colleagues come from with regards to process and with regards to the, whether this, again, is our purview to decide on. But thank you for attending tonight, and I would love to see all of your faces at more of our meetings and for us to engage more with you and for everyone to tell us, how would you like to be engaged with? How would you like to be communicated with better? We need to do better with that. So thank you for attending tonight.
Anyone else?
He wants to shut off the sound.
Okay. We have to do a sound check here. Okay. Okay. Ms. Yuri.
This is just a really quick note. It definitely sounds like a lot of individuals and the board are torn on this issue. And just thinking about postponement, we do have two board members missing. So if, this is something where a lot of people have a lot of different opinions on it. I think it would be helpful if we had everyone here weighing in. I think it would be helpful if we had everyone here weighing in.
So, just to weigh in here, I'm not torn on this issue. Ms. Davis noted that she and I were both on the Charter Commission back in 2009, and, you know, I respect, I've talked with most of you about this over the last couple of weeks, and I respect where everybody's coming from. Ms. Davis and I were the co-authors of The Minority Report back in 2010, and yet, tonight, we're coming down on different sides of this issue in the spirit of mutual respect, I think. But I, just to kind of weigh in with my thoughts, in terms of purview, I see this as absolutely the school board's purview. We have between 20 and 30% of our students are from immigrant families, and we don't know, but we can suspect that many of their parents are not able to vote, are not able to model for them the exercise of going into the voting booth and exercising their democratic right. Nor are they able to vote in two, in any of the municipal elections. Two out of three are directly related to school issues. They can't vote for us, the people who represent them and make policy decisions around their education, nor can they weigh in on our budget with their approval or disapproval. They are taxpayers as well, which gives them another reason to want to weigh in on the school budget issue. Furthermore, I think that when you create a culture where democracy is kind of ever-present and not excluded from your life, you learn to engage and advocate in society in a multitude of ways. We have trouble engaging parents in their own children's advocacy in our schools. It's a, it's a learning curve for people who arrive here and have to figure out our school system. And I think that this is a systemic way that we can address that problem and get parents more engaged in their own children's education. As far as the legal opinions, we, this was probably the biggest barrier when we discussed this on the Charter Commission. And, you know, what we have before us are legal opinions, which are just that. They're opinions until they're tried in the court of law. And I think that, you know, I was there, Ms. Davis was there, back in 2009, when Corporation Council Gary Wood stood right in front of us and said, "There is a legal argument to be made in support of this. It's a home rule argument, and I'm willing to make it in a court of law. And I encourage you to decide this on the merits of the issue." And as policymakers, that's what I'm prepared to do, is to decide this on the merits of the issues. I work in the court system, but I'm not going to be there for this. My duty here tonight is to decide this on the merits of the issue. And, you know, just to that note, also on the Charter Commission, we considered ranked choice voting. In one of those memos from Gary Wood from 2008, you'll see that he said that had similar legal issues with the state statute defining plurality, using the term plurality. But we went ahead and we decided that on the merits of the issue. Similarly, we renamed the school committee, the Board of Portland, the Portland Board of Public Education. We were advised by Harry Pringle, who was counsel to the school board at that time, that that was probably at odds with state law, but we did that on the merits of the issue. So, I think, given that this is such a school issue, I think it's our, it's definitely our purview to present this to the council and to go on record to say, "We support this, and we hope that you put it out to the ballot," which is exactly the call and the charge and the language of the resolution. As to the process, I know that it was an expedited process. It was simply because we kind of got word that the council was taking this upright away. I tried to get information out to everybody as soon as I possibly could and have conversations, put together this workshop for that. I know that it's probably not as much time as everybody would have liked. It's not unprecedented to take things up on an expedited manner when time calls for it. So, I hope that people have had enough time to think about this issue and read the materials. We have had the pack-up materials for a week and a half at this point. So, I guess that is all I really want to say on this issue right now, that I am fully in support of it, and I would encourage my fellow Board members to support it tonight as well. I think the community is obviously here to speak to this tonight, and I know that there are people out there that will be engaged with this throughout the summer if this is something that's on the ballot. So, I'm hopeful that with all of those people on the ground working to support this issue, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have a problem at the polls in November. Other thoughts? Ms. Moriarty?
Superintendent and I had coffee this past week, and my question to him was regards, what we, what we do have definite control over is around curriculum, and particularly like our adult ed curriculum. And I was curious to know, was talking to him about whether or not, I know we have our ELL classes, and we have the English classes, of course, but interested to know whether we have any type of assistance for our residents who want to become US citizens, whether we have any assistance of adding additional night classes, classes in general, on ways to assist people who would like to work on their US citizenship in general, so they could eventually, you know, vote in national elections and so forth, too. But Superintendent, did you remember that question? I was going to tell you I'd bring it to you.
I just remembered it now, so I did not follow up on that, but I don't know if, Shoshana, if you know the answer to that question?
My name is Shoshana Hoz, and I work at Portland Adult Education, and I have been a citizenship tutor there as well. So, there are citizenship classes held every year for students who want to, people who want to prepare, and in addition to that, there is a large group of people who are trained as tutors, who will work individually with people while they prepare. Some of those people have helped 30 or more people get their citizenship.
Thank you very much for that, and that's something that I think that's also a function of the larger system, national level, that I worry about. So, I'm glad to know. Thank you, Shoshana. Good to see you. Thanks.
Anyone else at this point?
So, next we'll be going into the public hearing. When this comes up on the agenda, I'll be calling for a motion, and at that point, we can have amendments, or we could have a motion to postpone, and we can, we can discuss that at that point. With that, what's that?
Public.
Yeah. So, with that, we'll conclude the workshop, and we will open it up for public comment on the resolution on non-citizen voting. Just so people have the rules, we allow three minutes for you to comment. Please address your comments to the Chair and not to individual members. Also, we don't allow cheering and clapping of anything of that nature, so that people can feel comfortable speaking whatever's on their mind. You'll have three minutes to speak, and please state your name and address.
My name is Pious Ali. I live on 184 Pearl Street, Portland. I'm also a City Councilor and the lead counselor on this ordinance or charter amendment on the council. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school board. Normally, I will not come here and participate in your process. I do come and sit here and watch, but this is something that means a lot to me. And during the charter commission, I was one of the people whose stories were shared with the charter commission. I remember I was on my way to cease-of-pis camp, so I couldn't make it, and I wrote something and shared it with a school board member, Ms. Jennifer Dill, and she either read it on my behalf, or she entered it into the record. And since then, I've gone on to become, I was part of this body, and I currently serve on the school board, on the City Council. I'm not coming back. Tonight, when you vote in favor of this resolution, you are not telling the council what to do. You are showing your support to a large number of the students who you lead, who you nurture by being part of this body. You are sending a message that you support them, you support their parents, and you also support some of their parents who are also your students at adult ed. And that message is by no means just a political statement. It is also a message to me, I know that I'm friends with almost all of you, so I would love to see you support this, and to the community members who are sitting behind me here, and the ones who are not able to make it. I know that this is political, and it looks political, but it came from the community. I have numerous meetings with members of the community who have made this something that they want to see passed. I understand that your role is not to pass it tonight. What I hope you will do is to vote and support the resolution, to send that message to our parents and the students that are in your care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Keier Labor. I live at 201 Dartmouth Street in Portland. I am here to get some clarification about this procedure, because it's my understanding that when this body votes on policies, they are, the policy is required to be given two public readings before a vote can take place. And tonight, I understand this is the first public reading, but yet, you're going to vote on it tonight. Is that correct?
This is not a policy. This is a resolution.
Okay. So, the, the school board's rules of procedure don't apply to resolution votes? They only apply to policy votes? Okay. Is there a place where that is documented? Because I was looking at the, the rules, and I didn't see anything in here about exceptions for resolutions versus policies. What I read is, "The policy shall be placed on the agenda for a second reading and action. In an emergency, the Board may vote to adopt a policy with just one reading. Such an action may only be taken upon vote of two-thirds of the Board members present. The term 'emergency' is to be construed narrowly, and this provision is to be used only in unusual circumstances, when a delay in adopting or revising could cause demonstrable harm or hardship." I, so everything I read here sounds that this procedure is in violation of the rules that you all agreed that you would abide by. And every one of you here took, you vowed to follow a code of ethics, which states that you will follow the Board's rules. Therefore, I, I can only conclude that if you hold this vote tonight, you will be in violation of your code of ethics. I mean, this whole, the whole purpose of this resolution is to promote democracy, which I fully support. But what good is democracy if we don't follow the rules that we all agree on?
Mr. Collier, you're at time. Do you need some additional time?
Well, that's really the point I want to make, and I would appreciate it if some of you could, could address this, this conflict and how it is that this is legal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Marfin. I'm a resident of Ratcliffe Street, and I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal. And before I start, I do want to say that I have a great deal of respect for each and every one of you. I know you are terrific Board members who try to do as thorough of work as possible. But I think this resolution is a resolution about values, and, and it's about who we are as a community and as a people, and as a city. I'm not talking about federal or state elections. I'm talking about just the city of Portland itself and the residents within the city, specifically immigrant residents and immigrant children that go to our schools. And so, I'm approaching this from a very intellectual level, not a political level at all. And so, when we're talking about process, I also want to note that in this country, process has been systematically used time and time again against people of color and against immigrants, and that the whole system that America is founded on is stacked against people of color and immigrants. And on top of that, this is not a normal time. Immigrants are under attack. People of color are under attack. And so, I really want to dig in, as I did in my op-ed, into some of the history. I pretty much wrote a thesis on this in preparing for this, so I'll have to cut that in half. But I want to point to a Law Review article by Kathleen Cole from the University of San Francisco. She says, "In the colonial United States, a voter had to be at least 21, white, male, with property, but not necessarily a US citizen. Non-citizens exercised the right to vote, and in some cases even held office, in as many as 40 US states between the 1770s and the end of World War I. For most of this period, non-citizen voting was seen as a means to retrain newcomer white men to be good citizens and prepare them to participate in national elections after naturalization as quote-unquote 'Americans-in-waiting.' In frontier states, it was also a way to lure New European immigrants to colonize native lands as homesteaders while defusing pressure from women and African-Americans seeking the franchise." And so, that's how I want to see this issue, as an issue where the school board is sending a resolution about values as people who are leading policymaking on educational issues and who come face-to-face with immigrant children in the schools and immigrant families, that this is a resolution about our values as a city. And so, think about it as a way...
Are you wrapping up?
Could I request a little extra time?
All those in favor? Go ahead.
Thank you. And so, I want to take that same idea that they used back then. Let this resolution speak about our values, and let this resolution really point to the idea that letting non-citizens vote in local elections, on school budgets, on local issues, on school policy that the school board perhaps sends to the citywide referendum, that this is helping non-citizens prepare as Americans-in-waiting for when they get fully naturalized, so that they know what they're doing ahead of time when they become full citizens and can vote in federal and state elections. And that's why I support this measure.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Hopkinson of Non-Grafton Street. It's nice to see all of you again of...
And, and so, think about it as a way-
Marfin, are you wrapping up?
Uh, could I request a little extra time?
All those in favor? Go ahead.
Thank you. And so, I want to take that same idea that they used back then. Let this resolution speak about our values, and let this resolution really point to the idea that letting non-citizens vote in local elections, on school budgets, on local issues, on school policy that the school board perhaps sends to the citywide referendum, that this is helping non-citizens prepare as Americans in waiting for when they get fully naturalized, so that they know what they're doing ahead of time when they become full citizens and can vote in federal and state elections. And that's why I support this measure.
Good evening. Uh, my name is David Hopkinson of 9 Grafton Street. Uh, it's nice to see all of you again, of this being a part of your productivity, and hope this is the first step to re-engagement. Unfortunately, tonight, I need to leave shortly after speaking, uh, but you all have my email addresses, feel free to use them. I have not got in the handshaking under control, so that will continue this evening. Every human that lives here deserves the right to vote here. This was difficult to write in one sense. I'm a direct descendance of the creators of this country. To say at this point I have no understanding of what it is like to be an immigrant is a gross understatement. The world is simply my oyster. On the other hand, this is one of the best times to write in our history. Our racist president has used rhetoric and direct verbiage that is out of the ordinary for any sane individual. This allows our imagination and cojones to grow, especially behind closed doors and the glow of our computer screens. One needs simply to look through the mayor's or WGME's Facebook page to identify many of these individuals. You know who you are? You're racists. Racism comes from fear. Specifically, white men's fear that someone that appears different than you might have an idea that is better than yours and work more dynamically than yours. America is the land of the free, Maine is the way life should be. Portland is a city dominated by hospitality. Today, Bon Appetit magazine named Portland, Maine, the number-one restaurant city in the country. One of the most beloved hospitality suites in this city is Amato's, and the item that made them famous? A goddamn Italian. Let that sink in. A sandwich this entire community identifies with is a ham-and-cheese sandwich on a large hot dog roll that is fondly called an Italian because of the immigrant that sold them. Imagine what would happen to our hospitality scene if immigrants were no longer allowed to work here. You literally trust them to put food in your mouth, but not to help decide if their tax dollars should pay for a school resource officer. What are we looking for here? People who we allow to wait on us hand and foot but do not even listen to their opinions that directly affect their daily lives? Come on, Portland, we're better than this, right? We want this to be the best school district in the state. We want to close the education gap, we need help. We need new ideas, different ideas coming from different walks of life. We need a wave of empowered immigrants. Isn't that the power of democracy? All the ideas are on the table. All the residents get to vote on it, and what the people want, the people get. You work for them as much as you work for me. This is a courageous undertaking, one which you deserve praise for considering, but please do not rest on the single laurel. You need to move forward immediately. Thank you for continuing to support our community and allowing everyone that resides here have a documented voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, John Thibodeau, 114 Clinton Street. Thanks again for all you do. So just quickly to start to address the concerns that I've heard so far from the board members regarding a rushed process, um, I obviously hear that and can sympathize, um, but practically it just seems like this is an issue that's come up, is coming up before the city council. It's an opportunity for this board to, to weigh in, and it seems like an opportunity, not a burden, so I'd hope you'd see it that way. Regarding this not being a school board issue, um, first, I mean, this is, what we're asking is for symbolic support from this board of putting to the voters a policy that is the foundation of this elected body. I, I don't know how it could be any more central to this body. Uh, you're not making policy, uh, you are endorsing symbolically, uh, what I would say, I don't know what would be more important or more central to this body, people who are going to these schools, live in our communities, having an ability to, to make decisions and be part of the governance process. As far as the, the argument of it being legally fraught, um, you know, I'm sure you all know, I mean, countless pieces of legislation across the country, uh, have been passed that have very serious questions of legality and constitutionality. Um, one very recently was Obamacare. So, to use that as an argument for not going forward, um, I, I would disagree with that. And, and in fact, I would, I would say the opposite, argue the opposite. Um, if we do not move forward as a city, we'll never find out. Um, well, we might if some other community, but there's very few in Maine that have the type of diversity that we have. Um, so that, to me, is really kind of putting it on the back burner and kicking it down the, down the, down the aisle. So I think it's an opportunity, and I think it's really our responsibility as a city and a community, uh, to take this stand. And, um, you will see what happens legally, um, that's what happens with lots of good policy. Um, and again, just a reminder, this isn't making policy, this is simply symbolically endorsing it. It's a big difference. So, let's see. So, why I think you should do it. Again, endorsing, bringing this to the voters, um, is the right thing to do. You know, having people engage in the decision-making and governance of their community where they live, they pay taxes, they go to school, you know, it just, it seems like a no-brainer. I think that was the, the phrase that you used. Um, this is really good for democracy, it's really good for our community. And I say this especially, there was news this morning or last night that came out that the Trump administration, uh, will be putting forth policy, it looks like, that does not need congressional approval, which could stop up to 20 million legal immigrants from gaining citizenship. Uh, this could happen in the next few weeks, it seems likely from what I understand. You know, we have a chance to do something here that's going in the other direction, it's the right thing to do. So, hope you do it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Miki Bondo, I live in the Federal Street in Portland, Maine. Uh, really want to represent today the, the community and as a parent, and, uh, voting in favor of the resolution is about diversity, because when we talk about diversity in Portland, Maine, we just don't see the color on the street. But we talk about diversity, about all opinion and ideas coming together to share for a common cause. It's not about the Board of Education to try to create a new policy, because there is really, there is, there is a resolution is already there. We don't create anything under the sun. Some of the older states are doing already the same thing. It's about just us to stand behind our parents. Then we really represent the school, then coming all together, then we share the same value, coming to try to make a change, and policy just have a voice being heard. That's why we represent the families. Going in favor in the resolution is just standing about diversity, about standing what we believe, then a strong community can all come together to make something really strong and make a change. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Howa, I live on Ocean Ave in Portland, Maine. Um, I had a couple of things to say tonight, but I just wanted to make some remarks on the statements that were made, um, by school-born members, so I'm gonna go ahead and, um, read what I wrote. My parents came to this country in 1995. They obtained citizenship in 2003. I was in third grade. Already have gone through three years of public schooling. Looking back, it's shocking to think that they had no right on members of their school board, the people trusted and elected to represent their children. As much as they were active in PTO meetings and after-school programs, in all my soccer games, basketball games, play, they were not allowed the opportunity to voice their concerns on school board issues. There's a huge disconnect right there. I went to school with some of your children. I went to school with both of your daughters. Um, I had a couple remarks about some of the, um, quotes that I had written down. Someone said, "This issue doesn't meet the educational needs of our community," and that it's not a school board issue. It is a school board issue, 100%. This affects school budgets, school policies, and what affects their immigrant children is a school board issue. Someone also said that discussion occurred in just the past few weeks. I also believe that that's not correct. This discussion about the right of voting for non-citizens has been happening for more than a decade. Ultimately, this issue is about extending the right of immigrant families and parents and allowing them to participate in voting for school board issues and school policy that affects the lives of all students in Maine, whether or not they have immigrant background. The goal is inclusion here. This should be a step in the efforts to allow new Mainers to feel like their voices have weight. This isn't, um, also one more thing, ultimately, if the school board members do not believe this is a school board issue, and you are allowed to believe that, then please consider allowing this to move on to council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Rodento Biaje. You know, I've been waiting for such a resolution issue coming out. This is our right as parents, now. To me, we want to participate in every, every election, every voting as parents. It's our right to know what is happening with our children in the schools. Not only the schools, not the school board. A child come from there complaining to the parents. So this idea is right center to the parents. I give thank you to those who come with these resolutions. We are going to participate and vote as parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shoshana Hose, I live at 29 Alden Circle. I'm here only representing myself, but I would like to say a few things about my background to put my remarks in perspective. I've taught ESL at adult education for about the past five years. Before that, I volunteered for 10 years as an ESL tutor and a citizenship tutor, helping three people become U.S. citizens. I was a founder of Welcoming the Stranger, the volunteer program that matches asylum seekers with mentors. I serve on the, um, steering committee for that program, and I mentor to asylum-seeking families. So I care a great deal about the immigrants in our community, and it is precisely that reason why I do have a lot of misgivings about this proposal. As we all know, this is a very perilous time for immigrants, and I really think the city should focus its efforts on the, the, um, the impact that your actions will have on the everyday lives of immigrants. My ESL students, my mentees, and other immigrants that I interact with generally have two major concerns: preserving the public assistance that is crucial for asylum seekers before they get a work permit, and improving the availability of decent, affordable housing. As we know, the state has had an ongoing debate about, um, general assistance for asylum seekers for seven years, and, um, it's absolutely imperative that it continue, and, um, so I feel like it's very important that we do everything we can to ensure that happens and to continue our local support for general assistance. We also have a, a serious problem with the quality and availability of low-income housing that directly affects many immigrant families. I'm just sickened by some of the places that I have seen, uh, that are ridden with bedbugs and cockroaches and other problems, and the city is helping to fund those by paying general assistance for people to live in some of those apartments. And I believe if the city wants to improve the lot of local immigrants, there's much more that could be done in this regard. Proposing that non-citizen immigrants have the right to vote is a gesture that may make politicians feel good, but it has the possibility of actually worsening conditions by giving voice to anti-immigrant sentiments in our community. I remember that some of that happened when we voted on this issue in past years, and I fear it could be much worse this time. We have a president who is actively encouraging fear and discrimination against immigrants. The issue of whether non-citizens should be allowed to vote is one on which well-meaning people can disagree. Moreover, as you know, even if Portland should approve a local ordinance, it is certain to be challenged, either by the state or in court. I do not see that this referendum campaign is in the best interests of local immigrants. Rather, I would encourage you to focus on the real, everyday needs of our, our immigrant neighbors, such as finding decent and affordable housing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Simon Thompson, I live at 111 Brackett Street. I'm testifying tonight strictly on my own behalf and not on the behalf of any organization. Um, I also want to thank those of you, um, who I've reached out to in the past week about this topic for being so willing to engage on a challenging issue. Um, I'm speaking as someone who previously served on the school board as Portland High's student representative in 2009, um, and in 2010, I was a regular volunteer collecting signatures to get legal resident voting on the ballot. Since then, I've worked on the early stages of an effort to bring forward this policy in Somerville, Massachusetts, and I wrote a journal article on this topic as well. I'm fully supportive of providing legal residents who are on the pathway to citizenship the right to vote in municipal elections for many of the same reasons expressed here tonight, um, and even if this were to not withstand a legal challenge, eventually, I think that the symbolic stance is important enough to take. However, um, I'm here this evening to urge the school board caution on supporting the resolution before you, um, because this issue has lost once before in Portland, and I am worried that the haphazard effort that has played out over the past couple of weeks could lead to another loss for it this fall. I am a progressive, and I would be surprised if many of you don't also consider yourselves as such, um, but as Shoshana noted, this issue is one that is incredibly complex for voters across the political spectrum, and I believe that in order for it to be won, there must be a sustained and disciplined education campaign on the issue. If you want to see what happens otherwise, just look at our vote in 2010, or at Burlington, Vermont, which voted down by 16% in 2015. I think a second loss in Portland for this issue at the ballot box would be fatal for it to ever become policy, which is why I'm urging caution tonight. I know I only have three minutes, so I want to make a few quick points about why I'm worried about this coming forward this year. Most of the background material that the board received was authored by Ron Heiduk. Um, he's kind of a godfather on this issue. Um, I've spoken to Ron as well, and his singular number-one piece of advice was to get the messaging right off the bat on a topic like this, um, and the messaging must be about legal resident voting and about Portlanders, um, and not about, and about no taxation without representation. Um, we don't want to use the term "non-citizen," that's a non-starter. Starting anything with "non" is just a bad way to go, and that's what I've seen so far this time around. Um, the current proposed revision for the city charter is, I believe, too broad. Successful cities have tailored the language to include only those legal residents who are on the pathway to citizenship, um, however they wish to exactly define that. Um, it's, as Counselor Ali said in the Press Herald article yesterday, that's nearly every immigrant, um, which is why I think that we should tailor the language as such, um, to hope to prevent attacks on it. And finally, I know that it's never the right time to expand civil rights and liberties, um, and that such an argument has been used since the dawn of time by those of us like myself who already have these rights. However, I take umbrage with the various proponents who have said that this year is an ideal time to bring forward this issue due to national dynamics. I would submit that, one, if we really want to see this issue succeed, we'll put together a longer-term campaign that changes hearts and minds and then puts it to the ballot box in 2020, when the presidential election will elevate turnout. Can I request 30 more seconds?
Yes.
Um, and secondly, um, given the, this year's, uh, politics in Maine, this issue's currently the top pinned post on the Maine Republican Party's Facebook page. They're claiming that Janet Mills supports non-citizen voting. Um, as passionately as we, as we may feel about this issue in Portland, it doesn't carry well statewide. I believe that a Governor Sean Moody would be much more harmful to Portland schools than waiting two years to bring this issue forward again, and it seems that this issue could very realistically hurt Janet Mills's choices, and I also believe this is an inherently political discussion. Finally, I'll close by saying that if the board thinks that this resolution will pass only narrowly tonight, that they consider refraining from voting on it. Um, I don't think that a divided school board on this topic will send a strong message of support to the voters of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Regina Phillips, and I live at 4 Dale Street. And I came here, um, as I was listening to you, um, and I got out my cellphone so I could remember to, um, make a point from your points, um, so I could come up here and, and, and do diligence. I didn't need to do that because, um, School Board Chair Anna, I think you did an excellent job of saying everything that I absolutely wanted to say, along with many of the people that are here behind me that also spoke in support of this. And so, there's nothing I can really say, um, other than that we're not asking you to vote on this, we're not asking you to fight the fight with the city council. This is a city council job, this is a city council issue. What, what we're asking you is, is to just support a resolution and then bring it to the city council. If you want to vote against this, that's your business and that's your option, nobody's asking you to do that here tonight. But again, like everybody before me has eloquent, some of them, have eloquently said, "We're asking you to pass a resolution just to get it to the city council." I could sit here and I could tell you what the process is for folks to become a U.S. citizen, um, but I'm not going to do that, because you're not the ones that are voting on it. I'll save that speech for the city council. Clearly no disrespect. And so, the last thing I also just want to tell you is, I work for a school system, and I am their Grants and Community Engagement Coordinator, and there's actually a grant out there right now to help, uh, citizens to be, to help- And there's actually a grant out there right now to help immigrants become citizens. And so I know as a taxpayer in Portland, I don't think anybody is asking you to provide any additional funding to help somebody become a US citizen. But if you wanted to, you could look it up on the federal website, and you would find that there is a grant out there that, if you wanted to, you could apply for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sahara Booker. I live in Greenleaf Street, and I've been in Portland for five years. I went to Portland High and graduated still in college. But I don't have the right to vote. But I work here. I live in Portland. I do everything that everyone else who is sitting here does in the city of Portland, but I just cannot vote because I am not a citizen. My friend recently moved from New Mexico, and she's been here for six months to get registered. She started voting, and I'm like, "Who? You just voted?" And she was like, "Yeah, I voted." I'm like, "I've been here for five years in Portland, but didn't vote, but you just came and voted." So I feel like as a person who live in Portland or resident of Portland, I should have the right to vote of who is the new board members. My family didn't have the right, and I didn't have the right. And I feel like it's time to empower immigrants and give them the right to vote, because we want to add to the community, because we live here. It's just going to be better. So I feel like you guys should all vote in favor of this problem. So that's my task. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abdullah Ahmed, and I live at 70 Riggs Street in Portland, and I work also for the school system. As you know, I often avoid to be on the microphone here, but today is something that I really want to do, and this is not about politics. It's about something that I support wholeheartedly, and I think, as research shows, and I did research on parental involvement, and I published work on parental involvement in education. And there are many types of parental involvement, from parenting to helping with the homework. But decision-making is most important parental involvement in schools. And allowing these wonderful parents and students to be part of the process and make decisions on the matters of the school board, the matters of the city, is very important for the student outcomes. So this is really related to the student outcome, as the parental involvement is correlated with educational attainment and student outcome. So this is an educational process. And your support is very much. These parents and students who are often not here, what they're saying here is that we need your support, so that when Tuesday we go in front of the city council, we at least have someone, our bag, or the board members have our bag, and they said, "Yes, we support you." So as much as it's symbolic, it is also symbolic, and it goes very far. And as someone who worked for the school system 17 years, I do remember teaching in Portland High School or in Lyman Moore Middle School and not being able to vote. So I know firsthand how it feels. I remember being a parent and not being able to vote. So this is really very important. It is not political. It is educational, and I ask you just to pass this resolution, and also to not only pass, but also go and be part of this process. As you mentioned, all of you said individually, some of you were on the record, supporting this individually. So I argue that you will stand, and there are staff members who work for Portland Public Schools who are not being able to vote. So this really goes beyond just a simple resolution. It is something supporting and building morale. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I was really nervous to come up here. So my name is Sahara Farah. I'm 10 Red Oak Drive, and a student in Portland. I know all of you. And I guess I just want to highlight one point in the sense of how important it can be, a gesture such as this one. And I guess, speaking on a student perspective, a lot of students, when around the national walkout time, when we're doing that, the support of the school board at that time felt so good in the sense of student advocacy and something, how support of a great body like that can do for advocacy. So to simplify what this could be, a gesture almost to continue a conversation that is very important for our community, and to deem it a noneducational issue is, with no disrespect, ignorant in the sense that how the chain work of what it is, like our students and how they're affected by their parents and what they can do. Students and parents should be able to go that extra step forward in what voting can be. To deem it not a school board issue is almost like kind of cutting that pipeline in a premature space. So the idea of giving that, this, that thumbs up to continue a conversation and to extend what the Portland Public Schools sees as power of diversity, because I know we use that narrative a lot, to actually exercise it and give that voice would be beyond important. So I just want to give that perspective in the sense of what a thumbs up and a support can give. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zensiana. I live in One Stone Street, Portland. I just want to make a reflection on all these matters. I mean, the school board, I understand why you are emitting some reserve about supporting or not supporting the resolution, but just think about it. You are the only board that can better understand everybody in Portland, as an immigrant and I mean, a citizen, because you have everybody in the school system. And then we are asking you to support it. Why? I'm going to give you an example, a little one. I live with roommates. Okay? I'm not a citizen. We live together. And then you have to vote something in the house or to keep the place clean, right? Do I have the right to vote? Think about it. That the issue here, do immigrants have the right to vote? Or because I'm now a new citizen, I cannot vote in my own house where I'm living? Live here, vote here. I live in the house, I have to vote? Think about it. So, as they say here, you don't have to support, I mean, to bring it, I don't know where it's a city concern, but we want your support, because you are the board that best understands everybody. That's what we want. We want you to support this. Please, vote in favor.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Martin V. Songojo. I live in 159 Greenwood Lane. It is a north derring, and I pay more tax for the school. I'm not here to challenge you. I'm just here to appear on behalf of those who call themselves refugees and immigrants, coming here with the hope of educating the kids to the standard of this country. Put yourself that you are professor in a school, and the world start here, and you run away, coming and sitting here. You have some idea, you can't participate because you're not a citizen. What will you think? That's what we hear about. We know the system. We're working hard here when we come here as immigrants to achieve and get a citizenship to vote. But this is about the greatest seat of Portland. How can you allow this parent to participate on the school process? Just local, not the governor, not the state senator, not all of this. Immigrant or refugees, it is a very tough word. The meaning of it, all of you know. So it doesn't mean that you just take your diplomatic bag here, you went where you want to go, to Africa, to Mexico, in vacation. It is you're escaping. So those who managed to escape their kid to come here, they have a greatest hope that they want them to succeed. So that's why we came here, and we appeal to you to support this. And it is your choice. I don't believe in something called gender. I speak about all the immigrants, from Europe, from Africa, because I do believe that we all create together. There's no white, there's no black, there's no... I only have a philosophy that in this order, there's only two people, a male and female. If I say you're white or you're this, it doesn't mean discrimination. I was born black man. I'm proud to be black. So I don't believe in discrimination. And anyone who believes that there's something called discrimination, I call him stupid, simple, because we all create equal. There's no difference. We have the same blood. So I am not a great speaker. One thing is, those immigrants, they have something to offer in this city. Those people are sitting, there's people sitting, they appear to be in different fear. So they can support and school board. So please, do your best. We're not here to tell you what to do. And thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Kushin. So I'm here to support immigrants. Even be immigrants for a long time, not only immigrants, everybody in Maine, like refugee or asylum, or whatever, we all in Maine. So I think the school board is the one, the best person to move for and help immigrants on these issues, because we work the kids. There's the kids who born here. If the kids not happy, because the family, they're not happy. So we need to support and see the issues where it come from. So we have to support the family. So we live here, we work here, we pay a taxi here, why can't we vote? So we're part of this community. We need to get the move together. Immigrants, we legal here, being asylum seeker or being a refugee. So we are part of Maine. That's where we build Maine. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hemza Hado. I live 1 Coast Lane, Portland, Maine. I hesitated to come out, but finally I forced myself to come in front of you. I thank you, and I'd like to see a united board, and I will argue if you can unite more and support this resolution. The reason that I'm saying is, it is very hard to imagine to become a refugee. Nobody likes to become a refugee and live, you know, another country. Everybody likes, you know, to stay where they grown up, where they have family trees, where they have relatives and neighbors. That's where everybody wants to live, but, you know, these people have been forced to come to the United States of America. And having said that, it is a process to become a citizen. It tooks to me almost seven years to become a citizen. I believe every people, they are on that path. One day, they will become a citizen, and they will have the right to vote. But I will ask if we can give the opportunity to the people who are already here and lived in Portland, Maine, and whom our neighbors, our coworkers, our children are going to school together, and they have the concern, same concern that I do have, same concern that you guys have. And I believe they deserve to give a chance, at least a benefit of doubt. And the people of color are the most of the immigrants who are in Portland, Maine, but we don't know the coming two years, three years, four years, 10 years, you know, which group, who will be the next victims to come to the United States of America, who we will welcome to Portland, Maine. The history tells us, you know, one ethnic groups will come to Portland, Maine, you know, they will feel or face some tough times, and other groups will come. For example, ethnicity, I'm from Somalia. They stopped, they are not coming to Portland anymore, or they are not coming to, you know, US anymore. There's other groups who are coming, you know. Before that, there were Sudanese, Djiboutian, you know, Congolese, Burundis, and now we see Angolos. And maybe tomorrow, we may see Italians. We may see, you know, other Europeans who may come to US. So please, be blind of the color, or, you know, the people of color. Be blind of C as your great-grandfathers, as we know this nation, it is a nation of immigrants. Everybody come one time. So please be in mind on that, and please support us to be part of this symbolic process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ladu Lodoka, and I'd like to tell you a story. In 2016, my son, who was then seven years old, came home. He goes to East End Community School, and he said, "Oh, Daddy, Daddy, I voted for the president." And then I said, "Who did you vote it for?" "Hillary Clinton." "Who did you vote for?" He asked me. And I didn't tell him who I voted for. But when people speak of integration into this community, the piece that they always speaks of is learning English or doing other things. They forget that the process or the American culture encourage the decision-making in the communities. When a policymaker is running for an office, he needed to be able to go to the community and sell their agenda to why they wanted to be in that office. That process of talking to the community is the way of how the community will be able to make the decision whether to vote for that person or vote for somebody else. You teach, you are the decision-making people who hire the people who teach our children in schools. You integrate them by teaching them about voting early on, before they're even of age or being able to vote. You are forgetting to integrate the people who actually give birth to those children. You are not the people who's going to make that decision, but you are sending a message that you stand with those parents. You are making a political statement that you believe that this community is welcoming to everybody, regardless of their status. That's why I stood here today in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christian Bissimo, living in 16 Delmont Court. My concern is just to remind you guys, people came from somewhere, they felt like the right was stolen. And arriving in America, they feel like, okay, they can go to the process for healing, and then they can regain the rights. So rejecting this resolution will be like putting them in the way they can be stuck in terms of healing completely. So it's up to you to decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Clovis Limba. I live in Portland, Maine, Grand Street, Apartment 19. So I have one point that I need to add. So I have one point that I need to add is about routine. In the past time, this resolution didn't pass. But right now, you have to think about, human being doesn't have any routine. We have to change. Our existence is called to have some dynamic process, and this process must be positive. And I think you all knows, you know very well, everything to pass this resolution. So what we need, just to ask you, you have a vision, you have a dream to make Portland, Maine, great city. So how are you going to make this Portland great city without integration, immigrant integration, immigrant board chair change? So think about that and appreciate everything that you can do for the best of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Francine. I live in Portland on Cumberland Avenue. I am an immigrant. I've been here like for six years, and I am a parent as well. My son goes to Dering High School, so I support this resolution as an immigrant and as a parent, because I believe that our city, Portland, is all about integration, about inclusivity, and about diversity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is George Rowe, and I live on Hanover Street in West Bayside. So I think this is an extremely worthy initiative, but what I would like Portland, and that includes our school board, is to be aware of how difficult things are in this country politically right now, and having this as an issue in November with an incredibly important governor's race for the state of Maine, to not hand the reactionary forces in Maine an issue with which to basically go after the rest of Maine. I think that we need to be patient and perhaps postpone this to next year, when we can do this from a position of strength. In November of 2016, President Trump won half of Maine, and he did that partly because there was an ill-timed gun initiative about background checks that basically riled up some of the folks in Maine who believed that that has symbolic power for them, and unfortunately drove a lot of people to the polls for the wrong reasons. And I do not want this important issue to be a reason why we get four more years of a reactionary governor, four more years of legislative gridlock. And frankly, the amount of damage that has been done to Maine in the last eight years, including to the very community that's here tonight supporting this important question, has to be balanced. Are you going to do more good by pushing this right now at this moment? Or are we going to focus on getting Maine back on track between now and the November election, and then come back to this from a position of strength, rather than using it as, letting somebody else use it as a weapon to make Portland a scapegoat? And if that happens, then I think we all lose. So I think you do have a difficult position tonight to perhaps delay something that should, unfortunately, in a better world, should be able to be moved forward right now, but perhaps we should wait. Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you to everyone that came out tonight. This is on our business agenda for this evening, so if you're...